This is how the gavel works. You know, it's...
Power.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Brian Sol, the Chair of the Howard Board Appeals, and I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30. Welcome to the meeting of Howard's Board Appeals on this date, October 29th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the board appeals, which were brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and Massachusetts zoning enabling act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is to require, is to require to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, Secretary, the attorneys, or agents presenting the case to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed. Though I have Ken next to me here who's very good at that, so he always lets me know what's going on. All right? While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding a case requests to fill out information form, which should be on the podium. Okay? And I'd like to have each member introduce themselves.
Marilyn Rothz.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Sol.
Kenneth Dixon.
John August.
Okay. Got a real quick, brief comment before we begin. And this is a push that I'm doing as well as other Boards, but before we begin tonight's hearing, I want to leave you with this thought. Our town depends upon volunteers. Every board committee is powered not by experts, but from somewhere else. Not by experts from somewhere else, but by neighbors like you who step forward. I know some people hesitate. Maybe the issues feel too complicated or too controversial, but that's exactly why your voice is needed. Hard decisions become better decisions when more perspectives are at the table. You don't have to have all the answers, just a willingness to listen, to learn, and to care about our community. Volunteering isn't always easy, but it is rewarding. It connects you, it teaches you, and leaves you a legacy of service. So have you ever thought someone should do something about this? And we all have at times. That someone can be you. I invite you to step up, perhaps tonight.
Along down.
Along down. Sign up and help shape the future of our town. Our Board of Appeals needs more members. I would be pleased, and as well as a lot of our Boards. We have one committee that doesn't have a quorum anymore. So it's volunteers throughout the whole town are very much needed. I'd be pleased to sit down with you, discuss the commitment in serving on the ZBA. Just reach out to the Building Department and request I contact you. And don't be concerned about the volume of code to learn, or even if you have no related experiences. You will start as an alternate member, but will be actively involved and able to comfortably learn. To prepare for most cases, you only need to learn one code at a time. Looking forward to meeting all interested residents, and thank you for letting me take this moment. Okay. Now, everyone has their agenda for this evening. I'm tossing it out, actually. The first are actually going to have a motion here. And Michelle, you should be unmuted. Are you?
Some requests.
Okay.
Hi, folks.
Okay.
Good evening.
So the first order of business, we're going to, I'm making a motion to the Board that we change the order of the agenda. And for the first item of business, new business, is to discuss the four open meeting law complaints, violation complaints that we received as a result of the Pine Oaks hearings. And so I like the notion we do that, to adjust it, and this go first. You have a second on that?
I would second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved. So with us tonight is Michelle Rendazzo, Attorney General Michelle Rendazzo from KP Law, which is our town law firm. And you have the floor. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Appeals. I'm here tonight, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to sort of walk you through the discussion of the four open meeting law complaints that are listed on the agenda. And just by way of brief process overview, when any individual alleges that a board, committee, or commission has violated the open meeting law, they need to bring that complaint to the Board in the first instance. And the Board needs to acknowledge receipt of the complaint and determine its response. And a written response ultimately needs to be provided to the complainants. And so that's what we're here to do tonight, is to recognize that the complaints have been filed and really talk about the substance of those complaints and how the Board wishes to respond. What most of my Boards, committees, and commissions find useful, and what I've done in this instance, is I go through and I look at meeting videos, and I talk to staff, and I look at agendas, and I prepare a written response to the complaints for the Board's consideration. Ultimately, is it up to the Board to see whether or not they agree or disagree with how I've summarized the events that led to these complaints? But ultimately, if the Board agrees with the draft response that I've prepared, then at the end of our discussion, I would ask that the Board vote to adopt the response and authorize me to send it on its behalf. So that's basically the process. If thereafter the complainants are unhappy with the response, they can then pursue it further with the Attorney General's office.
All right, thank you.
So basically, you know, as I understand the complaints and the history, when you folks are meeting in an alternative room, there have been some audiovisual technical difficulties. Hopefully, we're not experiencing those tonight. You're in the Griffin Room, it looks like to me. And so it does appear that some of those audiotechnical, audiovisual technical difficulties have been because you needed to be in a larger room to accommodate anticipated capacity. My understanding is, however, and I've checked this as well as staff has checked, there, most of the complaints have really been hard time hearing folks remotely and hard time seeing what's displayed on the screen when you're remote. Now, all of the agendas are clear that these meetings are in-person meetings and that remote access is provided as a courtesy. All of the materials, to my understanding, and I checked your webpage, you know, there's pretty much everything that you could possibly be considering has been posted on the town's website under the Queen Anne, if I've got it right, Pine Oaks 40B page, including any slide material. So those are available to the public as well as video recordings of all the meetings. And my understanding is that those are all audible through the video recording. So, you know, as far as remote access goes, where a meeting is posted as an in-person meeting, if there are technical difficulties with the remote access, the open meeting law does not require that the meeting stop. With respect to in-person attendees that may, at least I think from one complaint, there's an indication that even in-person attendees were having some difficulties hearing. My understanding is, is that there were efforts at those meetings to adjust with microphones or otherwise to ensure that folks could continue to hear. So my overall take on this is that it isn't really an open meeting law violation. At the same time, we recognize that you want all of the public that participates in your meetings, whether it's just by listening, observing, in person or remote, to be able to hear and understand what's going on. And as I understand from staff, this is an ongoing effort to ensure that there are, that there aren't these difficulties in the future. So that's my real short synopsis. I know you've got a lot of probably more interesting to the viewers at home and in person matters on the agenda, but I do want to stress that it is important when there are technical difficulties to try to address them as they occur. I spoke with staff about including on a future agenda for any continued public hearings on this matter, to include a website link to where all the written materials can be found. I will say that yours is probably one of the most comprehensive webpage I've seen with 40B materials. They are always of great interest to folks, and I do encourage you to continue that practice of keeping those written materials and presentations available so that folks are able to review them whenever they have the time and are interested in doing so. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, gentlemen and ladies, do we all read?
I've read the draft, and I'm fine with it as worded.
As am I.
I'm fine with the draft.
I'm fine with the draft.
I am.
Okay. The, one particular step for future meetings, particularly 40B meetings, when there's going to be a comprehensive presentation by, you know, the applicant or peer reviewers, et cetera, is that having copies of their presentation that if it's going to be, you know, on slides, pre-printed out and copies available when people come in, you know, when they get their agendas, they can pick up a copy of what a presentation might be, the presentations that may be happening that night, particularly in a place like 204, so that they can follow along. Because the, you know, the screen on top of, you know, can be difficult sometimes to follow. So I do appreciate the, you know, the concerns of those who file a complaint. I think it was well-founded regarding the issues online as well as sometimes audio. And we did try to do our best to solve those, particularly at the meeting hall itself during, you know, we ended up finding one good mic that we kept passing around. So the effort was made. And I appreciate, I think, your draft is fine. So at this point, Emma, I think the next step is for us to make a motion to accept your draft. And, correct?
And to authorize me to say on your behalf. And I just, just to, before the motion, I do want to echo the Chair's comments. Like, the response that I prepared is not meant to downplay at all the issues that were raised by the complainants. Right? I think as everyone knows, there were some technical difficulties. And, you know, the complainants did recognize that staff were working to try to resolve these. And so I think, you know, as long as folks have a mind for a future, you know, for tonight, it shouldn't be an issue, I think, because we are in the room that's got the good tech, right? But, you know, mindful of those issues moving forward, I think everybody is, this is a good reminder for folks that, you know, tech, technology isn't always perfect, and we need to be able to adjust. And as the Chair said, for example, making written copies of materials available in person. Folks that are viewing from home will be able to access those materials online. They should be, because my understanding is it's all posted up there too as well. So with that, I'll stop.
Yeah. Though most postings have been the day after a meeting when we have the materials from a client, but we're going to try to be better at that going forward. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion. We have the responses to the open meeting violation complaints. The one I have is dated October 27th, 2025. And I think that is correct. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the draft and make it, there's no, motion fact that there are no changes to the draft, and we accept the draft as written. And I'd like to have a second on that motion.
Second.
And I'd like to authorize the KP Law to file these drafts, to file these responses. We're required.
Second.
Okay, second by Marilyn. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night, and I appreciate you taking me up front.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Right, one more issue relative to this conversation. In the future, in 204, if as a Chairman of the Board, you require all participants in the audience to move forward as opposed to sitting in the very back rows of that chamber.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And everybody sits up front so they can see things.
May I add to that? I wouldn't say require, but invite them to come forward so where it's easier to hear and see.
You can't see. Yeah, the gavel can only do so much.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, now, Al, let's go on to the first case.
All right. All right, case number 2025-48, Thomas Orton, trustee of Thomas E. Orton Revocable Trust through the attorney of Marion Rose Esquire, the owner of the property located at 245 Lower County Road, Assessor's Map 5, Pascal D5, and the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, alteration or extension of other structures, attachment to Table 2 area regulation to construct a deck addition on the primary dwelling to raise and replace a second dwelling to be rebuilt for use as an accessory building residential two-bedroom on pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The Howard zoning bylaws 32554 and Mass General Law 40A Section 6.
Okay. The, you're going to...
I've got to read the rest.
Okay.
All right, the Howard Historic Commission commented they have no concerns with the application. The Howard's Board of Health commented that a full-floor plan on the main dwelling will be required with a building permit for health review. A licensed septic installer may apply for an septic system permit to install a new tank prior to the building permit sign-off. I'll put his letters in support of the project from John E. and Fiona Rendon.
Okay, I got to pull that. Let's see. "To whom may concern?" This is from John Rendon. "I am writing to express my support for the proposed building project at 245 Lower County Road, which borders my property to the north. As the immediate southern neighbor, I have reviewed the plans and believe they will enhance the character and functionality of the area. The proposed improvements, including the deck and outdoor shower off the main house, as well as replacing the existing cottage with a garage and second-story space, including the bathroom, are thoughtfully designed and in keeping with the residential nature of our neighborhood. I appreciate the care taken to ensure the project is respectfully, respectful of surrounding properties and contributes positively to the community. I fully endorse this project and encourage the town to approve the necessary permits. Please feel free to contact me if you require any additional information. Thank you for the consideration, John and Fiona Rendon." Okay. I'd just time invite the attorney or agent representing the folks to induce themselves and any person assisting you.
Certainly. For the record, I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport. Glad to be with you all today. I'm here on behalf of the trust that owns the property at 245 Lower County. We have several people with us in support of this application. All right, Dan Croto is a survey and engineer on the project. Tommy Orton is about eight feet wide and five feet tall on the screen in front of us. He is the trustee for the property. And his mother is behind us, Donna Orton, as well, and her sister and brother-in-law. We are here.
If you could unmute Mr. Orton, okay?
Thank you. Just for clarification, I'm not sure if that, I don't think that letter had the address, but he is the closest, Mr. Rendon is the closest neighbor to the cottage that's going to be raised and replaced as part of this application, and it's 55 Earl, right next to this property.
Looking at the deed, he's also the former owner of the property.
He is, indeed. He is, so he's very familiar with both properties. Yes. We are asking for two special permits. The first permit is for a deck over the primary house which faces Lower County Road. And the second permit is for the raise and replacement of a pre-existing non-conforming one-story cottage to be replaced with a two-story garage and living area, where that footprint will be slightly less non-conforming as to the side setback. You all have as part of your package the site plan, which shows the existing and proposed conditions. And I just want to go through that bit to show what's here.
Attorney, may I ask a question before you start?
Certainly.
I'm looking at a document from our Building Department that says you have subsequently, the applicant has amended their narrative dated October 23rd. Request as an alternative, a special permit relief under 3252K to construct an accessory apartment for residential accessory buildings, which could be an A2, which would have a kitchen. So I know that the Board has read all this in advance. We're a little confused. So before you start your presentation, we'd like to have a little clarification.
Certainly. We kind of, because of responses from the Building Commissioner, threw the kitchen sink at this, because we believe...
Kitchen sink, I like.
Sorry. But we believe that this is, first off, it's sort of... What we have on the ground is a primary dwelling and a cottage. We believe that the cottage is a second dwelling unit, because it has living area, cooking facilities. It's been there since, before zoning, since 1948. And so that's the first step. And we believe that if you agree with that, and I think, I don't want to get ahead of my skis, but I think from looking at the Chair's memo, that that may be the case. If that's the case, you all believe with that, we believe that it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. We're replacing it when we're raising it, and we're, we're not creating any new non-conformities. We're not increasing any non-conformities, and we're moving it very slightly away from that side setback. So that's the first argument. I'm just kind of getting ahead of where I want to be. But in terms of what you mentioned with the last, the third version of how this could be granted as a special permit, is the citation that you mentioned. And that was done late, and it was done last week. It wasn't done, and so there wasn't proper notice. We can withdraw that one. I'd like to talk only about whether this is an existing second primary dwelling or whether it's an accessory structure residential with bedrooms. Under either one of those, it qualifies as a special permit. And that, that's our, those are our two arguments that we'll address today.
Listen from this point on, thank you.
Great. Okay. So back to the site plan. Let's look at the current conditions. So you see, there's Lower County Road up at the top. You can see the existing single-family house. The house is non-conforming as to the front setback on Lower County Road. It's at 22.2 feet. And on Earl Road, it's at 24 feet. And so, as proposed, on the right, you can see that the proposed deck goes no closer to Lower County Road than the existing structure. With regard to the existing cottage, it's to the south on this site plan. And the existing cottage, at its closest, is 8.4 feet from that sideline. So there's an existing cottage and a large deck. If you've gone there, I've enclosed photographs in case you weren't able to go by the site. But it's not a shed. It is a true cottage. We've shown interior photographs of what it looks like with the living area. There's a full shower. And so that is 8.4 feet from the sideline. And as proposed, it would be a two-story structure with a garage underneath, keeping the driveway more or less in the same location. And it would be, at its closest, 8.5 feet from that sideline. And you can see on this site, because it's a corner lot, you've got these two front setbacks. You can look to the right in between the proposed deck area and the proposed garage area. You can see where the reserve area is for the septic. So there had to be some separation with that. It couldn't, it would be difficult, and Dan can go into that a bit more if you'd like, but it would be difficult to move the garage as proposed further away from that side setback. So I'd like to run through the relief requested for the deck construction on the primary dwelling first. That would be under 32554A2 of the Howard zoning bylaw. And we believe that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing residents for the following reasons. Number one, creates no new non-conformities. Two, the deck is designed in a way which limits exposure on Lower County Road. That width of 16 feet, the shorter width, is on Lower County, and it's longer on the sideline. And it's well-screened. I wrote a summary of reasoning and attached a landscape plan to the back of it. You see that it's well-screened from both Lower County Road and from the neighbors. The construction materials used for the deck are wood-grained trex or trex-like material. It's in keeping with the other decks in the neighborhood. It's not anticipated that the deck will create any nuisance, hazard, or congestion or harm to the neighborhood or adversely affect public health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of the town. For those reasons, we'd ask that the Board grant a special permit to construct the deck as proposed.
That's under 325A7?
No, not A7. A2.
A2, I'm sorry.
And with regard to raising and replacing the second dwelling, we seek permits, a permit, a special permit to raise and replace, as I've said before, either the pre-existing non-conforming as to setback and use second dwelling or the pre-existing as to use and setback accessory building residential with bedrooms. That's found in the definitions of the Howard zoning bylaw. And it would be, what's proposed is slightly less non-conforming as to the setback. And that is allowed under Howard zoning bylaw 32554A5. And with regard to the cottage, I want to underline that the cottage has been, has existed on the site since 1948, at least since 1948, per the Assessor's Field Card. Its residential use has been noted in the Assessor's database. In that field card, the description is of multiple houses. And I have a copy of the Assessor's, the field card, if you all would like to see that. And we believe that under 32554A5, as long as there's not an increase, increasing, or you're not increasing or creating a new non-conformity on building coverage, site coverage, or setback, or encroachment, you're not substantially more detrimental than the existing conditions, and you don't create a nuisance, hazard, or congestion, and you improve one of those issues. We're here, we're improving the side setback, albeit slightly, we are improving, making it slightly less non-conforming. And for those reasons, I'd ask that you grant a special permit to raise and replace the cottage as well, as proposed. Happy to answer any questions that you have. We heard what the Board of Health said about providing the... We heard what the Board of Health said about providing the site, the plan, the floor plan for the primary dwelling. Happy to produce that, and that be a condition of any permit. Oh, and if I might, I did go through this, and there were just a few-
We'll catch that in a minute.
Okay, certainly.
No, it's quite, we don't mind, we'll deal with that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. All right, John, do you want to kick things off with any questions?
I think, like you, Brian, I don't have an issue actually with the project. What, as Ken said before, I'm extremely confused on exactly-
There was a lot going on.
On being asked to approve.
Understood.
You know, so, again, I sort of defer to the chair on accepting these changes and the withdrawal of the previous document that we received, but again, I don't have a problem with the project or questions on the project. The only thing that I, the one area where I do think it's larger is that existing deck off of the cottage is basically being considered part of the structure, right? I didn't get back there. Is it attached to the structure?
The existing deck, yes.
The current deck is attached to the structure.
It's the first floor.
Okay.
No, I mean, it's down at the lower level, whereas the proposal is a garage under and then bringing it up.
Right, because it is a larger structure.
Correct.
You know, two floors versus the deck that's there, you know, which is just a deck.
Correct.
But that's really the only-
See, part of, part of the structure is deck, but it's, it's up on the second floor.
Right.
But the bottom floor, it has garage and storage.
Now, John mentioned a, trying to defer me for a moment to my questions, all right. So has, in the past, this cottage, the current cottage, can you describe it? Does it currently have a full kitchen?
I, it has a, I don't believe it has an oven now. It has had an oven in the past. I don't believe, when it was renovated, it has an oven, it has a microwave, it has a sink, there is a full shower and sleeping area.
Boily?
Yes.
The septic plan from 2003 has it as living room, kitchen, bedroom. It's basically an efficiency, one-bedroom efficiency with a bathroom, a separate bathroom, but does have it.
So the site plan from when?
2003, the septic plan, septic system plan, shows that, floor plan of the-
Shows kitchen?
Shows there's a one-bedroom cottage, shows living room, kitchen, bedroom, but it's all one open area.
Right.
Efficiency style, and then with a separate bathroom.
Kitchen, bedroom, and a bathroom.
Let's see, living room, kitchen, bedroom.
Okay. And further to my comment, Brian, and that's where I think, again, it's sort of convoluted as it seems to me if we accept your argument that it's a separate residential dwelling, with or without a kitchen, once it's established that they could add a kitchen by right under the ADU statute.
Correct.
So it almost doesn't matter, right?
I think they would like-
Once you accept that it's a residential structure.
Well, I guess, in the past, has this cottage been rented out?
Yes, it has.
So it's been previously rented?
It has.
Is it being rented now?
No, not now.
So it has a prior history of being rented?
Correct.
I believe it's going to be the owner, and then the owner's mother will be living in the other. This is the current plan.
So when I did the case review, and I indicated the fact that- that the relief was not, you know, indicate the fact that, and again, now, I have amended version in which you're looking for relief under 325-T3K. I mean-
I'm taking that out.
Okay, everything keeps shuffling here, and we've been-
Right, no, that's, that's what we talked about a little bit earlier. I'm taking that out because I gave you all notice of that late in the game.
Okay, I just wanted, because that's, I wrote that up. It was under 3T, you know, K, to construct, replace a cottage, residential, residential accessory apartment. And I indicated the fact that relief was not included in the legal notice which ran October 16th and 23rd. Okay, now. Typically, my opinion is the fact that if, if a notices is made and there are changes to it, as far as at the, at the hearings regarding what relief is being sought, that as long as all the information was available in the, as far as what was going to be taking place, if all the information is in the original application, it's in the legal notice that goes out, and also that all the information has been forwarded, you know, sent to, you know, registered to the butters, if nothing's changing, except what codes we're referring to-
That's exactly what's happening.
Okay, that, you know, I'm typically fine with it. Now, that also includes, and not to, you know, not to get on a podium here to keep talking, but for instance, sometimes people have asked for a special permit, and we determine that it needs a variance, which is a higher authority.
Understood.
A higher relief. But as long as nothing's really changed, I believe this board typically has been, I believe myself as chair, I'm fine with going with a variance on the higher relief because nothing's really changed in what the information is out there to the butters and so forth.
Right.
So my original, and again, I don't know how to work through this on the codes, but my original objection, and I was, you know, all set here to be talking about a continuance, all right? You probably figured I teed that up in this report.
Yeah.
Because nothing has changed, because we're now going to a situation where an ADU and has a neighborhood been informed and made aware of the fact that this could be a rental unit. Because an AD, you know, it's, you're looking for an ADU as both for people who live there, but also an ADU can be rented out.
Right.
All right, so now it becomes a, you know, a two-family scenario on that lot, you know, as far as two, two housing, separate housing units, and one can be rented. And I was not aware at that point, when I had initial objection to it, that the cottage has had a history of being rented. So it's kind of changing my viewpoint a little bit on it, okay? All right. What is, just so I don't forget, what is the timeframe on this project granted, you know, approval tonight and so forth?
I believe that they want to start working, I mean, it's a little bit late. This, they started, we started trying to work on this permit in May, and with the building, with the building commissioner's referral under A7, we tried to work through that because we didn't think that was the right relief.
Sure.
And so it's late in the game. So I think that there's going to be some demolition, but they're probably going to start working in the spring.
Okay, all right.
But this is a project that they want to complete.
Yep. Ken?
Well, so I'm clear, you're withdrawing the request for it to be under the ADU statute, correct?
Correct, correct.
Then I don't have any questions, and I like the project.
Thank you, sir.
So if it's, here's the thing, if it's, it may not be in the ADU statute, but the main thing in the ADU statute is the fact that having a second residence on your property, which you can rent out if you wanted to, and live in. So it's, we already have a cottage here which is, in the past, has been used as a second And they will be in the future, whether, right now, I mean, things change, you know-
But that's not the intent, right?
Right.
Now, but-
Twenty years from now, if the house is ever, property's ever sold, 30 years, or whatever it might be, we have a, we have a, basically a two-family, you know, separated by a bunch of grass, but it's a two-family situation. So you can, they can, everyone has a right to rent it out, all right? So, so the ADU doesn't even come into play. That's why I say it's sort of a moot point. Because once you accept that it's a second residence-
Right, right. That's why there were so many parts of this, it's-
It doesn't, you know, by right, they can designate it as an ADU in the future. In the future, all these amendments, can you come in, at least bring a box of Joe for the staff or something, okay?
I, I hear you. A baby blanket, something.
Well, this is a bit of a mess, man. Really.
My only concern was with the butter, and it sounds like the butter's just fine with this, so I am too.
Thank you.
Sounds like a terrific project. And probably the sooner the better, going on it means you can get into the summer months where they're completed.
That's the intent.
Now, just have to work around the gas company picking up the street in front of it.
Coming down.
Okay, the, the other thing here, I believe we need to have, and help me out here, you know, I, since the, this was turned down, or noted by the building inspector commissioner to be under 325-54A7.
I will withdraw, like, after you, I think the order of this is you-
Well, I can, I mean, we can also do the motion to-
I can withdraw that, right.
-grant relief, I mean, from the, that decision. That's not a problem.
I can withdraw it if we are able to get a vote on either of the other forms of relief.
All right, so if I vote on, we vote on the other parts of it, I don't believe that motion is-
Exactly.
-is necessary to do it.
I can withdraw it.
We're going to get to open session, we actually have any questions and so forth, but the, so basically, looking at my draft as far as some emotion, this needs to probably say the fact that the applicant has been granted a special, if we should vote approval, the applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-54A2 and A5.
Correct.
And alterations, they're both alterations and extensions of other structures. And 325 attachment to table two for area regulations to construct a deck. Is that, do I have, do I, do I need that one? We need that one as well, don't we? We have 325-54A2 and A5.
Right.
Do I need 325 attachment to table two? We have regulations. No.
No.
We don't.
Could I make a note on, is now the time to make a note on a couple of these?
Not quite, yeah, we're getting there. I know your actions would do that.
Very anxious.
We're going to get there tonight.
All right.
All right, okay. Okay. Any other questions in the board at the moment? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding this, this case? Any additional questions? Okay, nope. Okay, all right, now, we can get to, so hearing nine, we're going to move forward. This is a, all right, so now we look at the documents and follow these little procedures, folks, is keep this in line, the open mini, you know, the open mini laws, that's why we do this. All right, so first want to get to make sure we have all the cleared documents that have been presented. And so we can all look at, we have look through, one through nine on the application hearing documents included. Anybody, have we missed anything there?
No.
Now, it's the recommended findings and conditions. So we, under four, we can say that last, this relief is not included in the legal notice which ran October 16th to 23rd, nor in the legal notification sympathy butters, however, the board has agreed, board and applicant has agreed not necessary. Does that cover that?
You can say the applicant withdrew-
Oh, so, oh, yeah, okay.
Relief.
All right, applicant withdrew, okay. So I'll get that decision squared away, right? And as we often do, we'll send you a copy of the decision before-
Thank you.
-it gets posted, okay? And so we're going to get rid of five.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Give us a minute to fix this for them. Any other changes you mentioned?
Yes, on six, the lot size is 16,991.
Yeah, okay, 16,991?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, thank you very much.
Again, on seven, it will be increased not to 13.8, but 15.8%. And on nine-
Hold on a second.
Sorry.
13.8?
It's not 13.8, it's 15.8. And on nine-
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sure.
15.8, yep.
And on nine, it says that all of the setbacks are conforming, but there are two non-conforming setbacks, front setbacks for the existing main dwelling. And if you want to put in perens, it's 24 feet and 22.2.
And 22.2, all right? Okay, yeah, that's my error, thank you.
And then, the only other comment I had was on 15. Let's call it a special permit, not a variance.
Oh, go ahead, sir, okay, thank you.
That's all I've got.
Number six, Mr. Chairman, what did we have for an area?
I'm sure I heard that it should be 16.
Six, 16,991. 16,699.
I'm sorry.
16,6.
Thank you.
The application said 16,9, but the drawing says 16,6. That's where the confusion-
No, I went by the application.
Yeah, yeah.
It said 69 the whole time.
Yeah, there was a title in that, that's where you got it from, it was from us.
Oh, so it wasn't my error?
No, it wasn't your error.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm feeling better already.
The coverage is ours.
The only one that's 16,6 is the drawing.
Okay. All right. I didn't ask you, I believe you can keep vehicles on the site, construction vehicles.
We can.
Okay, so, you know, we're, given the area, I do recommend, in any comments, the fact is right there, that street, that no demolition and exterior construction from June 30th Labor Day. We all agree on that?
Yes.
Okay. Life of the property, life of the project to keep construction vehicles on the applicant's property in the standard violation insurance of a special permit. We all agree with those, okay? I'd like to ask a motion that we accept the documents and findings of facts and conditions of approval as, as amended.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Chair asks for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. The vote of the closing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Assigned voting members in this case tonight, obviously Al, Don U., myself, John Argus, Kenneth Dixon, and Melo Ratz. I can now entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
So moved, huh? Okay. Have a second on that? Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to close discussion?
Aye.
All right. So, we got the, we do this.
Okay.
So, just going to change that to A2 and A5. And then we get rid of this line here.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion, please.
Okay, case number 2025-48, the applicant seeks a granted relief from the determination of the Building Commission.
No, no, I'm seeing the wrong one.
On the wrong one, I'm all the way down here.
Okay.
Case number 2025, case number 2025-41, Thomas Orton, trustee through Thomas E. Orton Revocable Trust, through the attorney, Marion Rose. The property is located at 245 Lower County Road, Assessors Map, 5 parcel D3, excuse me, D5, RH1 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 355-54.
325.
Section.
54 of A2.
A2 and A5. Alterations to the extension, let's see. Alteration or extension to the structures of 325 attachment to.
You won't get rid of this one here. Just follow this one.
Can't follow the scratches.
Yeah, we're not reading those.
To construct a deck in addition to the primary dwelling and raise and replace a second dwelling to be rebuilt for use as a residential accessory building with bedrooms in a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 355, 325-54 and Mass General Law 40A, section 6. Granting will be consistent with the Gale and related cases, and there will be no intensification of one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with regard to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the applicant, application, said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30th and Labor Day of any year. Two, that for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. Any via, three, any violation of the terms and conditions of special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass General Law 40A, section 7. And the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Excellent. Well done. Are there any amendments or changes to that? Yes.
I believe that you all were going to approve a second primary dwelling. What was discussed in the proposed order was an accessory structure residential with bedrooms, and the difference, I think, is whether it has a kitchen or not.
I hear you. I thought, actually, we have here, raise, replace, don't rebuild as a residential accessory building with bedrooms. All right, so you, all right, do you want to be adding here bedrooms, living room, and kitchen?
Sure.
Okay. And does that cover you for that, then?
That covers me, as long as you're specific.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. What defines kitchen?
I believe it has to have an oven, right now. That might be.
It's got a microwave oven in it.
Right. But I think, I think now it's an oven versus a microwave. But, you know, microwaves can be ovens as well, so it gets a little crazy.
I think it's the Building Commissioner's determination.
Right.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
As for what defines a kitchen, I think it, I think it's up to.
A cook does, doesn't it? Really?
Yeah, normally it's having a stove.
Right.
Yeah. So this is going to have a stove?
Yes.
All right, so, living room, bedrooms, living room, kitchen, and bathroom. On a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to Howard, et cetera. You good with that?
I'm great with that.
All right. Okay. With those amendments, are those, given those amendments on that, I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is granted.
Thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Pleasure.
No more late changes next time.
One more.
This is our next case, Al.
All right, case number 2025-49, Janice Camp through Alexis Mazano, Mezino. I mispronounced that again.
It's Mazio, but she won't be here.
Okay. 157 Pineos Block Booster Mass, owner of the property located 15 Park Street, Assessors Map, 50 parcel N4 in RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for 325-54, section A5 and 6, excuse me, A5 and 4. Nonconforming structures and uses, 325 attachment to table 2, area regulations, 325 attachment 3, table 3, heightened bulk regulations to construct in addition on the left side of the house, on the side entry, mudroom, basement stairway, and a shower on existing half-bath on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-54, chapter 48, section 6. The Howard Health Department commented that the office in the basement and the den meet the definition of a bedroom. Therefore, no doors shall be added to the den and must be obtained two cased openings. Howard's Highway Department and Historical Commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns, a letter from Kevin J.
Kevin, I'm sorry.
Kevin. Let me see. Kevin J. Judge, 13 Park Street.
Okay, a letter from Mr. Judge. I am the abutter of the petitioner to the west of 15 Park Street. I have no objection to the petition, and I request every relief sought by the petitioner be granted. Truly, very truly, is Kevin J. Judge. Okay. I'd like to have the applicant induce themselves, and anyone assisting you in the presentation.
Well, as you can see, I'm a loner up here, but my name is.
Come on up.
My name is Tavis Babbitt from Babbitt Design. I was the designer on the project, and so I'll be presenting this evening for you. As you can see, the existing house.
Sorry to interrupt. Just clarify one, just, I guess, administrative matter, is that the designated agent was Mazio Construction. So I know you're Babbitt Design.
Yes.
But is the client here as well?
The client is here, yes.
Is there any way to get the client to acknowledge that you're representative? Because that's not what the documents show.
Can the clients come on down?
Yeah, come on down. I just don't want to have an administrative issue with it.
Absolutely.
So, the agent is now whom? Which, I, I, any answer?
Tavis Babbitt.
DA?
TA.
No, TA.
T A V I S.
T A V I S.
Last name is Babbitt, B A B B I T T.
B A, D, DT?
B A B B I T T.
I T. Just one T, correct, or two?
Two Ts at the end.
Okay. And, it's Travis or Tavis, I'm sorry?
It's Tavis.
Okay.
I get that a lot.
I apologize.
As you can imagine.
And you're with what company?
Babbitt Design.
Okay. Okay, he will acknowledge the fact that the owner of the property has acknowledged that Tavis Babbitt is, in fact, the agent on this case.
I do.
Okay. All right. Sorry for interrupting. We're good to go.
Let's make it official. Thank you. Thank you for members of the board as well. We appreciate the time this evening. As you can see, the home that we're seeking to make changes to is an older home, it's 1948, small house. And presently, there is a full basement, but no interior access to the full basement. And as you can tell from the floor plan, it's a very small footprint. And so currently, the basement is the laundry room, and the owners now live there full-time, and they're tired of going outside to get there. So that's one of the main reasons we wanted to make this change, is to add an interior stairway access into the full basement, so we can use that space more efficiently. As well as the one bathroom that's there and the half bathroom. So having a second bathroom with a shower would be beneficial. It will be actually accessible from the bedroom. I don't know if it's updated on the plans, but the footprint is the same as we have presented. So the addition is relatively small. We are obviously altering something that's an MR, I mean, RM, for zone. And currently, we don't meet the lot area or frontage. Of course, we're nonconforming on those two. And the setback currently doesn't meet the requirements of 20 feet on the west side. That's 15.1 is the existing. And what we're proposing, where the bath, the shower will be, is 15.3. So we're not increasing that, but we are increasing the severity of the nonconformity in that, in that zone. The building coverage will increase, but not past 20%, so we're not creating any new nonconformity there. And the site coverage will increase by 0.5%, so a very small amount there, which is already nonconforming. It's over the 35% currently. So we are seeking relief with regard to this addition for a slab-on-grade mudroom, as well as the basement stair and shower. So based on what we've considered, we don't feel that what we're proposing is going to be any more detrimental to the established, you know, character of the neighborhood, future or present, and the town. So we think we're in harmony with the general purpose of these zoning bylaws, and we appreciate your approval and consideration for our project. Happy to take any questions.
The, for purpose of full disclosure, I had a conversation today at the Go Leader Department with Janice Camp and her husband, where I just, all was discussed was the process. Because at that point, they were concerned whether or not they were going to have representation tonight. And they weren't quite sure how to handle it, so I discussed the process with them. And I also, at the same time, since they were there, mentioned potential need to check things out with the Board of Health. Okay. All right, so just want everyone to know that I did have a prior conversation.
Yes, and with that regard, we did notice the comment there about the den being considered a bedroom, so is the office. So speaking with the clients, they really only had doors in the basement to control, you know, temperature and sound, but they have, they have no reason to put any doors into that basement space for the office, so.
Yeah. That is in our concern here. That's, that's the Board of Health is, they will get involved out on reviewing the permit. And they have to sign off on the, on the building permit itself. Okay. The, so, any questions?
John?
Uh, nope.
No questions here.
No questions? I don't have any?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that wanted to speak to this case? All right. Hearing none, I just want, any additional questions or comments on the applicant on this? All set?
Well.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering where your gavel is.
Look at lady, you got out of hand.
Okay. You mentioned that when I met with you.
Yes, I did discuss, so if she got out of hand, I would be using the gavel. All right. So, the, let's first go over, just make sure we have all the documentation. You have that in front of you, I believe, look at the application hearing documents included. I've got down one through six. Just want to verify that all the dates are correct. Any comments on that, Mr. Babbitt?
No. The dates are correct. What do you have for a set of plans, by the way? Just wanted to check the date on your plans.
What about the plans, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to make sure what the date is.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so that's all set? Okay, correct? Okay. And then, the next step is the recommended findings and conditions. Now, before we just jump into one through 10, just want to go back to the standard thing, thing here about, will you be able to, on the site, I think you really can't be parking all the, all the vehicles on the site.
It would be a challenge. It's too wide, but it's very tight, so.
And I don't, I think in that location there, I didn't, I didn't feel that was a, that was an issue. So probably, I'll be recommending that we not use item two. However, what was your timeframe on this project? I know it's, it was originally November, but we're looking at January and so forth. Obviously, as early this spring or late winter as you can?
Yeah, I think maybe a six-month, a five, five, six-month period.
So, right. And in this particular case here, I do think we can put.
Just start.
Yeah, for a condition, I'd like to still use a June 30th. Is everyone fine with that?
Including June 30th.
That's just for exterior.
For just exterior.
They're working inside, but just exterior has to be completed.
Okay.
Right. Okay. Exterior is done by June 30th. Okay? Or after Labor Day.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So back to the findings of facts. Were there any changes we have from one through 10, folks? Any recommend? And we just go over this because it would be part of the decision. Okay. So we're all set there? All right. Now, I'd like to make a motion that we accept without any changes. The findings of facts, as well as documents. Can I have a, and with, and can I have a second on that, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
You know, have a second? Old Marilyn, do you want to second that?
Yes.
Right. Vote on closing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The board members present here tonight will be voting. And, Al, did I give you a copy of the?
No.
I apologize.
It's okay.
It's okay, it'll happen again.
I'll do my best. One sec. Tell you what, here you go. So we're getting rid of two here, and raise your motion. Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Case number 2025-49, Janice Camp through Alex-
Actually through Tavis Babbitt. Get a change of-
Oh, Janice Babbitt.
Yes.
No.
Tavis Babbitt. Oh, it's written in. Probably forget. Because I'll make this a mistake on doing the decision.
Will not make a concern.
Okay, I wouldn't even bother. Okay.
All right. The property is located at 15 Park Street, SS map 50 parcel N4 in the RM zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit, 32554A and 5, non-conforming structures and uses. To construct an addition on the left side of the house with a side entry mudroom, basement stairway, and a shower to the existing half-bath and pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 32554, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the Gale and related cases, and as there will be known, intensification on no more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood under pre-existing non-conforming lot. The proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the applicant. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. A violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're released and granted. There you go.
There we go.
This is a gavel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Call on this case? Okay.
All right, case number 2025-50, Michael F. Gilligan Jr. and Ann K. Helligan, through their attorney, William Cole Michael Donovan, sitting in. The owners of the property located at 74 Uncle Vinny's Road, assesses map 25 parcel U7 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit on the alternative variance of 32554A, 2B, and 2, non-conforming structures and uses, 325 table 2, table 2, attachment to table 2 area regulation, add a dormers to the second floor of the existing house within the same footprint of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 32554 and Mass. General Law, 40A, Section 6, and 10. The Howard Health Department commented that the complete floor plan of the entire dwelling must be submitted with the building permit for the Health Department review. The Howard Conservation Department commented that any alteration to the foundation within the AE flood zone will require applicant, application to the Conservation Commission. Howard Highway Department Historic Commission submitted no comments indicating no concerns, and no other comments from the town departments or budgets were received.
I'd like to have the applicant introduce themselves and close assisting you in presenting this case.
Good evening, I'm Michael Donovan, from Croll and Donovan Law, representing Michael Gilligan and Ann Helligan. I don't have anyone with me tonight. They couldn't make it. So this is probably one of the most straightforward ones that I've had. It's just adding dormers onto the second floor of the house. There's nothing being done with the footprint whatsoever. I think the numbers is adding something like 60 square feet, because the dormers are going to bump out a little bit, so it adds a little bit of square footage, and some of that square footage is over on the eastern portion of the lot, where there's a 12-feet, 5-inch setback from that area. So that's how we got sent here. We had conversations with the building department back prior to the current commissioner, and were unable to convince them that this was something that they could approve without having to come to ZBA. So here we are. As my document shows there, there's, you know, a bunch of setbacks are conforming, and the ones that are non-conforming, there's no change to any of those. So we had, I asserted two arguments there. The first one is one that I've made kind of several times here, that we think that the building commissioner has the authority to grant this type of a request without having to come and refer us to the ZBA. I have the case law in there, you know, discussing that. But the second argument, I think, is the one that tonight, advancing law, which is the special permit argument, that there's no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood based off of adding some dormers to the second floor of this house without any change to the footprint whatsoever. That it wouldn't change any negative impacts to traffic, noise, odor, congestion, or the And so I think that's all I have. I don't want to belabor the point, and if you have any questions, we certainly can answer those.
Well, I, on the line with your views regarding, I realize the law, the code is additional habitable space within a, within a existing non-conforming setback is the issue.
Yeah.
But I think when, there's a point where things are inconsequential and minor, that perhaps, you know, hopefully, we can get an opinion from the town attorney, which the new building commissioner will agree with, that will, in my opinion, not speaking for the board, in my opinion, that we can eliminate cases which will, I don't think anyone's going to have a comment, and we're just going to run through this. So I appreciate the, taking the time to go through the motions. Just so I've, what is your timeframe?
They're planned to start as soon as they can.
Okay. And given that interesting driveway as far as on the lot and establishing the right way for that driveway-
Yeah.
Will they be able to maintain vehicles on the lot?
Yeah.
That is a busy street.
Yeah. Yeah, they're setback, they should be able to put those into that driveway area where the garage is.
Okay, all right. And we get to where I think we're finding the date range and so forth.
Yeah.
All right, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Actually, excuse me, I apologize. Out of order. Al, do you want to start with you? Do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Nope.
Well, and I echo your sentiment. I mean, I think that one of our options here tonight is truly to override the building commissioner's decision, but because I think it's going to be a special permit, it's going to be easy, I'm not going to make that motion, but I'm going to address the chair and to our, and to our town council that going forward, I think we need to go by what the statutes would allow, and this is ridiculous to make these people come here and do this.
Well, second that.
I agree. I agree. I don't, if I thought at this point, we have a similar argument, we put before the town council to make a ruling, or make, give me an opinion, not a ruling. And we haven't heard back from that one yet. So once we have that in hand, then we'll be able to go forward and discuss this with the current building commissioner to get really things squared away on future, future situations like this.
Yeah, and so if I may, on that point, I just wanted to see if someone can double-check with town council that that wasn't, that they don't think that was eliminated because those ones went to special-
I doubled, I doubled down on it.
So they know that it's still something that the board, not only myself, but the board is interested in.
Given all the cases, and particularly on larger case that they're working on with us, they've had a lot of-
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was on their plate, and they didn't think that it wasn't anything needed anymore.
It's on the burner, but the back one.
Yep.
No other comments?
I echo Ken's comments, but I also point out that 325-54A, 1B specifically allows for a dormer.
Yeah, but-
Am I right?
But the question here is, this dormers, this actually creates, well, some dormers go out, and you're allowed to-
It creates additional-
You're allowed two feet.
But I think we have two conflicting-
Right.
And you had a choice here of which one to rest your hat on, and I think you could easily have rested your hat on this one and said, it said as long as it doesn't increase the square footage of the building, which it doesn't.
It does.
No, it increases the habitable space.
Increases the habitable space.
But that's not what this, this one says, as long as it doesn't increase the square footage of the building.
Why did you not choose that?
Figured a lot by-
Because in the past, we've been told that that has to do with the habitable space, and that they have a, has habitable space, that if you're creating more than, where you have a slated room, it's not habitable space if it's three feet high, but now if you put a dormer in, it'd be-
Yeah, I heard the same, but I guess I'm just echoing that. I think there's an avenue within the existing zoning that this could have been approved and not been here.
I don't believe the, if I thought tonight, just granting relief from the, from the building commissioner's decision would help us in the future, I would do it.
Yeah, well, I'm concerned for an experience, so you want to get more on the project, right? So, all right.
All right, now, is no one in the public, I don't believe? And I don't think there's any additional questions here? And let's just make sure we got, do you have this?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, do I have any corrections on the application and hearing documents?
No, those, fine.
Okay. Any changes to recommended findings and conditions based upon documents submitted?
The only, was number 10, it has the word variance in there.
Okay, I know I kept, I threw this thing here, that's my copy and paste.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Chair would like to make a, makes a motion that we accept the documents and the findings and facts without, with the changes as indicated. And I'd like to have a second on that, please?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Marilyn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Really do that in unison, though, we're pretty good. Maybe we should go two. Okay, all the members voting, presidents and I who will be voting on this case? Want to entertain a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing discussion?
Aye.
And now entertain any further discussion? I don't think so. I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion.
Case number 2025-50, Michael F. Gilligan Jr. and Ann K. Helligan, through their attorney, Michael Donovan Esquire. Owners of the property located at 74 Uncle Vinny's Road, assesses map 50 parcel U7 in the RM zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 32554A, 1B, and 2, non-conforming structures and uses, and 325 attachment to table 2 area regulation to add a dormer, add dormers, to the second floor of a pre-existing home house, within the same footprint on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 32552 and 54 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48. Granting is consistent with the Gale case, related cases, and others will be an intensification of one or more, more, more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, congestion. And any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. At the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public street or road. A violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
I hear a second on this.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, we squeaked one, we squeaked that one by, huh?
That's going to be tough.
I tell you, I thought it was a close call all the way. Okay.
Standing awake.
Okay, I'd like to have the clerk to call the next case.
Case number 2025-51, Mary Beth and Michael Donovan, through their attorney, Michael Donovan Esquire, owners of the property located at 5 Trinity Cove, assesses map 1 parcel E39 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit on the alternative variance of 32554A, 2, non-conforming structures and uses, attachment, attachment table 2, attachment to table 2 area regulations, 325, attachment 3, table 3, a heightened bulk regulation, maximum site coverage exceeds 30% of the renovation of the new, of addition above the first floor western section of the house within the pre-existing, existing footprint of a non, pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, 32552 and 54, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and 10. The Howard Health Department commented that the septic system was installed in 1994 and was designed for four-bedroom. It has passed Title V inspections in July of 2020. The exercise room must have a, have a five-foot case opening to eliminate definition of a bedroom in a home office. Number one, must remove doors and maintain five case openings to eliminate definition of a bedroom. The Howard Conservation Department commented that the alteration of the foundation within the AE flood zone will require applicant to, application to the Conservation Commission. The Highway Department and Historic Commission submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. No other comments from the town departments or budgets were received.
I'd like to have the applicant introduce themselves, and you were assisting here.
I'm Michael Donovan. I'm Michael Donovan from Kroll &amp; Donovan Law. I'm here by myself because this is actually my personal residence. So I'm here in two capacities.
Is it worth pointing out the old adage that.
Yeah.
Where the representative himself as a.
As an idiot for a client, yeah. Yes, guilty as charged. So, yes, we were here, we're back in 2022 on the east portion of the hollow, so that was a complete raise and replace, and we completed that back in 2023. And at this point now, we have the western section of the property, which was a ranch with a flat, kind of California ranch, flat roof, that is leaking, not surprisingly. And so, we're looking to keep the same footprint, it's somewhat like the last one, but more substantial, keep the same footprint, but built up. And in doing so, both on the, on the western side, it's actually just a half a foot short of, it's 19 feet, five inches, or 19 feet, six inches. So that's, there'll be some habitable space there, six inches worth, that would be within the setback. And then in the back, I think it's. Was it 13.4 going back? So there's some area there that on the second level will again be within that setback. So that's why we're here, seeking special permit relief. You know, on my chart here, it's showing that the east setback is conforming, will stay so. Pretty much everything else is non-conforming, but the proposal has no change to any of those setbacks or building coverages or site coverages or building height or any of those matters. So, therefore, we're here because there's the intensification in that western and rear portion of the property. We would submit that the proposed work would not be substantially more detrimental to the entire neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. It's not going to have any negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, congestion, or the like. And be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Okay. Well, I think Mr. Donovan is very disappointed. If we can give us a thorough review.
I have to say, I was disappointed in the drawings. I, I always visit the houses anyways, but, but there was no way to tell from the elevations what you were doing versus existing without going and taking a look.
Uh, because of the.
He didn't put an existing elevation in the drawings.
Do you feel this case should be continued?
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, we might. Well, if there were any other members that did not have the opportunity to review this, there's some.
So, just so I, there's always like things I miss. I didn't, I missed the elevation situation.
Well, it doesn't show, I just realized, it doesn't show the one story now with the flat roof.
Yeah, it doesn't.
See side by side what is there now versus.
Yeah, it's not, it would be on these drawings here, Brian.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
It shows the proposed.
Right.
It doesn't show the existing.
Existing, yeah.
Maybe you can get a credit for this.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Other than that, I have no issues with it.
You're looking at the application. Your rear yard setback says 3.9 feet?
Yeah, this is the decking.
Oh, the decking.
The decking is there, correct, yeah.
And there's no change, obviously no change of site coverage. Sean, I don't have any questions, but.
I wish I did, I mean, but, sorry. That, we want to get to it just because it's part of the whole thing. You're, how are you on construction vehicles being on your property?
Yeah, we can do that because we park the driveway and over to the side.
And.
But I guess the question is, though, it's a private road. Is that a condition on a private road? Do we?
Yeah, actually, it's not. We can't enforce it on a private road. Okay, so it. We can eliminate it. You know, these attorneys are. So we're eliminating number two. If there's been another situation, I'd be saying the fact that you consider actually your neighbors, if you, please, keep them on your property because it's.
We intend to, I think we will for the most part, but just in case it's a stray one's not.
And timewise, I think we won't get into this, but going with the normal.
The normal, yep.
I don't have, I don't have any questions.
Al?
No questions.
No?
No.
I don't think there's anyone here in the public wants to speak to this, but I'll ask a question. Anyone in the public? Hearing none? So now, let's just move forward and look at the information presented. On the application hearing documents, any changes, one through six?
No changes.
Okay. Oh, and I just, I'm, for anyone who says anything, the violation of terms that's for a special permit?
Then I have nothing.
Uh, yeah, I think there's, everything all fine.
Everything else is fine.
One through 12?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That being said, Chair would like to make a motion that we accept the. Accept the documents and the findings and facts.
Second.
Okay. As well as also the conditions. So that's a second for now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, John? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess I use my left hand, too, so I get a, get a complete workout. Okay, voting tonight, we, all the current members here and present? Would you entertain a motion to close discussion?
So moved.
Any second, please?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? All by the blue in the apple? Okay. Hearing none, I'll ask the, did I give you the case? Yeah, I did. I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion on this case, please.
Case number 2025-51, Mary Beth and Michael Donovan. Owners of the property located at 5 Trinity Cove Assessors Map, one parcel E3-9 in the R. Amazonian District. The applicant has been granted a special permit or an alternative of variance. This is usually our language anyway.
Oh, you.
Over here.
Get rid of it. That's me, I'm sorry, apologize. From.
Has been granted a special permit and alternative of variance, 325-54A2, non-conforming structures, uses, 325, attachment to Table 2 area regulations, and 325, attachment 3, Table 3, heightened bulk regulation, maximum covers not exceed, like, pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 325-52 and 54, Mass. General Law, 48, Section 6 and 10. Granting is consistent with the Galen related cases. There'll be no intensification of one more, one or more existing, non-conforming, no new nonconformity, no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. As proposed, structure will be, will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. The grant, the approval are subject to the following conditions: During the life of the project, there be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Any violation of the terms or conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaws in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard's zoning bylaws as these may be amended from time to time.
Yeah, in my era when I did the draft, no, no, we just need to eliminate or any alternative of variance, okay? And with those changes, can I hear a second, please?
Second.
And like to vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion is approved.
Well, I was exhausted.
How are you guys?
You know, guys, as a courtesy, you think Attorney Donovan would have let his other client's case go first.
Just gonna say.
You know, rather have him wait around for that length of time, but. But he really had no consideration.
Happy to be here.
Okay, I hope you don't mind, I apologize.
They told me that they very much enjoyed these hearings and they would want to get as much as they possibly could.
Attorney Donovan, Donovan's.
Oh, remember that for next time.
On behalf of Attorney Donovan, I'd like to apologize if I had to wait. I would have appreciated that, but actually, Attorney Donovan's, that this one, because I'm sure there's a history lesson. Is this?
Oh, this one here?
Oh, absolutely. Is this the reason for the name of the street?
It is.
This building?
It is.
So are you prepared, Mike, to go over the history of this?
I'm gonna go over the history of it if you'd like, yes.
Yeah, really, I mean, I mean.
Fresh off of historic last week over there, yeah.
We're talking about the 1970s, sir, you know, that type of thing, you know, okay. I'd like to have clerk read the next case, please.
Case number, excuse me, 2025-52, Mark K. Watson, trustee for the 16, 16 Schoolhouse Road Realty, represented by Michael Donovan Esquire. The property is located at 16 Schoolhouse Road Assessors Map, 14 parcel F4B, and the owner of the property is located at 16 Schoolhouse Assessors Map, 14, oh, I don't know that one. In the R. Amazonian District, the applicant just kind of runs together. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative of variance for 325-54A2 and C, non-conforming structures, uses, 325-54A7 and B, non-conforming structures and uses, 225, attachment to Table 2 area regulation, 325, attachment 3 Table 3 heightened bulk regulation, its maximum height coverage exceeds 35 feet. To renovate the pre-existing house, to raise and replace pre-existing, existing garage with a finished second floor of living space, raise rear one-story addition and replace the smaller structure, the deck on top. Remove the exterior deck and stairs and the south side of the main structure of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 325-54, 52 and 54, Mass. General Law, 48, Section 10. The Howard's Health Department commented that the dwelling of 16 Schoolhouse Road has existing variance conditions. One wish states no increase in the square footage of habitable space. Therefore, the project will need approval from the Board of Health at one of the monthly meetings. The Historic Commission has commented that the house was built in 1880, pre-assessing records, pre-existing.
Pre-assessing.
Yeah. The project needs to go to the Historic Commission because the house is over 100 years old. The Highway Department submitted comments indicating that no new concerns, no other comments from the Town Department sort of others were received.
Okay, thank you. Al, I'm gonna switch off with you on this one, give you this one because I made a mistake and just took that out.
What?
I made an error, or we get, we get to the, we get to the motion, I made an error. So why don't you grab this one?
Okay.
Okay, and I'd like to have the applicant introduce themselves and those assisting you on presentation.
I'm Michael Donovan from Kroll &amp; Donovan Law, still. And I have someone with me for this one.
My name's Tim Seaback. I'm with Patrick Gaitan, architect.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, and we're representing Mark Watson, the trustee of the 16 Schoolhouse Realty Trust that owns the property. And the property is a historic property. It was one of the schoolhouses in Harwich. They're identical schoolhouses that were built in, I think, five of the villages in Harwich, the most recent one being renovated in West Harwich. And so, we did go to historic, was that last week or two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And then they did agree that we could move forward with the project at that point with the designs that had been put together by Tim. So that was a positive result. And we talked there about the history of it, which was, it was, it was built in the 1880s, served as a schoolhouse. They were built, they were all built around that same time. It was built similar, we're close to where it is now, but not where it is now. It was a little bit further towards Route 28. And it was moved in 1960. And apparently, it was at one point owned by the owners of Thompson's Clambarr, and it was used as housing for Thompson-Clairbar employees. Lynn Zalzak, that was on the committee, saying she used to remember driving the company van over there to pick every, drop them off at the end of the day and pick them up to bring them to go to work. And that was back in the 1960s and 70s. So shortly after, it was moved to that spot. And one other note is my partner, Bill Kroll's father, went to school there.
There you go.
He wanted to make sure that I mentioned that to you. He thought you might be.
I'm sure he did.
So, the property is, what we're looking to do, Tim and the owner is looking to do, is the garage is in very poor condition. And so, that's not something that can be saved. They're gonna raise that and replace it and put habitable space on the second floor of the garage. And then, with respect to the house, the, the main body of the house is gonna pretty much stay, the footprint's gonna stay. In the back, there's a one-story addition that's there that looks like it's like a series of additions that were done, poorly done. Some of them have, was a deck that got turned into something, you know, they put some walls and a roof on it. So that's gonna get knocked down and replaced with a new one-story structure, a smaller structure than what's there now. And then there's gonna be a, a deck on the top of that, and then stairs coming down from that, but that's how you'll exit down from the second floor, which then allows them to remove the exterior decking and stairs that are on the left side of the house, the south side of the house, which is pretty much an eyesore. From the third floor, they have a ladder coming down onto the stairway there. So that will allow them to remove that, because they'll have that other means of egress. And then, there's obviously gonna be major renovation going on inside the footprint of the house. So if we look at from a zoning standpoint, the front setback is conforming and will stay that way. The lot size, frontage, the north side setback and the building height are all non-conforming, but no change. If you look at my chart there, there's gonna be no change to those. And then the third category I put on there was non-conforming, but they're actually reducing those nonconformities. So the setback on the south is 1.9 now, it's gonna go to 8.1. The rear setback's 15.7, it's gonna go to 17.9. And both the building coverage and site coverage are gonna be reduced slightly. Some of that has to do with smaller footprint on that addition on the back. So, at the end of the day, the only reason I think that we're here is that habitable space above the garage, that's within the setback on the northern section of the property. And that's at 19.9 existing, and the proposed is gonna be 10, I guess it's gonna be the same on that side, 19.9. The footprint's gonna change very, very slightly. So it's pretty much that same footprint that's on that side. And so, we would submit that this is a, again, would not be substantially more detrimental to the entire neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. There's not any new nonconformity, there's not any increase in any. There's not any new nonconformity, there's not any increase in any nonconformity. There's just merely some creation of habitable space on the second floor of that garage and that these changes will not negatively impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, congestion, and the like. And therefore, we think this is a candidate for a special permit to allow this project to move forward. Happy to answer any other questions you have.
Sure, thank you. On the garage, so it's a detached, Attorney, detached accessory dwelling unit?
Accessory dwelling on the top.
Now...
A residential accessory.
Yeah, detached residential. Is, we're just looking at living space and bedroom space in there or what other plans are for the... Is that gonna have kitchen and all that kind of stuff?
No, I don't think it's gonna have a kitchen.
No, it will have a small kitchenette, but there's not gonna be a stove or anything in that area.
Okay, alright, okay. And nothing that you're renting now, just for family use?
No, it's just additional lounge space on the property.
Okay, alright. By the way, the mailbox says 18.
There's 16 and 18, they've been used different over time.
Okay, just happened to notice that.
Yeah, but they're listing it as 16 on the property card.
Okay. Ron, you have any questions?
No, just a comment, I think this is a great project. I'm pleased to see this is going to be loved up.
Yeah.
Renovated, and I hope you'll put the bell back in the tower.
You know, we, we want, we showed it to remain. During the historical meeting, they actually preferred that it be removed.
Really?
Yeah.
Which was to our surprise, so we are gonna remove it because it was, it was...
It was added later, they said.
It was a condition?
Yeah, they said it wasn't part of the original schoolhouse and that the other schoolhouses don't have bell towers.
So it was added after 1960.
Oh, my.
After, when, you know, so it's not our original bell to the schoolhouse, so they actually preferred that we remove it.
Are you gonna remove the whole structure or just the bell?
The whole bell structure.
Yeah, remove the whole thing.
Yeah, and it currently needs, it needs some love and, but, so update that it will be removed.
Interesting.
Yeah.
It was interesting.
And I hope you'll move on to that building, the house just next to it, that is in terrible.
I know what you're talking about.
I don't know who owns it, but...
Yeah, not sure.
Just see all of that redone.
Yeah.
Make it a very nice.
This will be a start, yeah, I don't know who that other owner is, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming, just walking around, there was like a one side, a basement area situation going, is that all gonna be?
That's gonna be a new bulkhead, so we're gonna put a bulkhead in that spot.
That's right, I'm sorry, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, John?
I agree with Marilyn, beautiful project, happy to see something like this being restored. Your story with the clam bar, though, sort of give context to the Health Department's note about no more habitable space.
Yeah.
I get a feeling they're related.
Yeah.
They're putting staff up in there. Probably packing them in.
Yeah, I think that's...
Probably told them more.
That's probably right. Although, as it turns out, they have, there's not, there's actually a decrease in habitable space. We're gonna, we'll address that with the Health Department.
Yeah, I know what you're doing, but I think that, yeah.
Historically, yeah.
I think that's why that restriction was probably going on.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
Housing staff there.
If I may join into that, I was one of those girls dressed in the red sailor suit for Thompson's Clambarr, where the tastiest clams are.
Yes, I love it. It's gonna break out in song at the moment here, we're gonna get the jingle.
All kinds of Howard, I mean, you know, this, we have a Howard channel as far as you guys are up there, as far as, you know, the history of the town. I did run into your partner as well, though, this week, because I did the graveyard tour.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Many of his predecessors are buried. He was out there making sure we didn't disturb anything.
I have no questions, Mr. John.
I was gonna get to you, Ken. And I, Al, you've got none, you're all set?
I would like to see that dog went back in to tell you this, really.
You wanna make it a condition, so then we can open rule the historic?
My question about historical.
I don't think we can, you know, I'm happy to go down that route and see what happens, but...
Yeah, we'll pass on that one.
Okay, alright. Is there anyone in the public that wants to comment on this? Hearing none, any additional questions from the applicant or the board? So, let's, let's jump into the staff report and make sure that first of all, I have all the hearing documents correct.
Yes.
Okay. And I recommend, okay, I recommend the findings of conditions based on the documents submitted, how are we making out there?
I think there's a couple of cut and paste problems. Number 10, I think that's from the prior one, 5 Trinity Cove.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, 10 and 11.
Yep, okay, I must have, alright, thank you.
And then 11 says the structure would remain as a single-family dwelling, that's from the prior one, too.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And then 14 is just that same special permit, basic variance, yeah.
But everything else, all the other calculations and...
Yes, everything else looks fine, yeah, just those three things, yeah.
Now, folks regarding maintaining vehicles on the lot, how are we making out with that?
I think that's fine, right, because they've got, yeah.
Because you've got a parking lot way back.
Yeah, yeah.
Should be fine.
And I mean, there's a parking lot there, so I guess...
It's not very full in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's just, obviously this one...
No, no spaces.
I don't think there'll be any problems in that, you know, and I think given the traffic and so forth, the 230th, Labor Day, gotta stay in effect.
Yep.
Alright, okay. So, I'd like to, I'm making a motion that we if we accept the documents, findings, facts, and so forth, that's done. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm for a motion to close the public hearing.
Well moved.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Members present will be voting on this. I'm for a motion to close discussion.
Well moved.
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Further discussion by the applicant or the board, hearing none, I'd like to ask the clerk to read the motion.
Case number 2025-52, Mark K. Watson, trustee for the 16 Schoolhouse Road Realty, through his attorney, William Donovan. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-54A2C nonconforming structures in Table 2, Attachment 2 Table 2 Area Regulation 325, Attachment 3 Table 3 Bulk and Height, Height and Bulk Regulations Maximum Height Coverage is 35% of the renovate, renovate an existing house to raise and replace the existing garage with a finished second floor living space, raise rear one-story addition and replace it with similar, smaller structure with a deck on top. Remove exterior decking and stairs on the south side of the main structure of pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325-54 and Master General 52 and 54, Master General Law 48, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the gala-related cases and there will be no intensification of one or more existing nonconformities and no new nonconformities. No substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood and the pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as a, the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to noise, traffic, noise, odor, congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant or approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new land seed between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. For the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on a public street or road. The violation terms of these conditions as a special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to Master General law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Excuse me. You're all choked up over this case. Take a moment here, folks. And I have a second on this, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Hearing none, I'd like to vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have your relief.
Thank you, thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, project.
John, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we get into the rest of the new business and old business, have you, just be a moment. Take five.
You're gonna be doing the collecting?
Yeah, I will. I don't know who to give them to today, but...
Whole bunch of changes.
Not a close reading, you know.
Oh, well, see if there's a way to... Anybody have any clips?
Lots of clips.
That you don't want?
Don't want.
Steal his.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
That's not good.
Of course, it's going to hit the grid. It's the bottom, it's Jamaica.
But you know what? They actually always hit those for the most part, but without a category five.
But it actually seems to have the worst...
And I stole your paper clips.
Okay.
Do you want them back?
No, it's all right. I can move, I can... I'm all set. No, no, I don't need them. Okay.
Stick them in the window, that's what you're doing, right? You just put them through a window, aren't you?
There's a bunch on the counter, I guess, so I just put them with them.
Let's knock off the minutes first. We're back in the session, folks. So we have September 17th.
I've moved to approve as submitted.
Okay, so nobody has any changes?
Can't remember.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. September 24th.
Moved that we would approve them as submitted.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're at the October 14th.
I have several changes to note, some of which are typos, I don't know how important those are, but on page three, two-thirds of the way down where the paragraph starts out with Attorney Freeman responded that under State Wetlands Protection Act. Get there.
Okay. Attorney Freeman, sorry, I am there.
Okay. Here's my addition. It says Attorney Freeman responded, applicant is not asking for waivers, and the ZBA does not have the authority to grant any waivers. What needs to be added there is the words of state or federal regulations. So obviously the ZBA cannot waive state or federal regulations. And that was our discussion.
Yep, good catch. Very good.
On page four, one, two, three, four, on the fourth paragraph, I mean, where it says, Mr. Sullivan requested a list fall, obviously it's all, there shouldn't be an F in there.
Should be probably of all.
Of either, either of all.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Something probably of all. But the next paragraph is important, where Attorney Freeman noted regarding the wastewater treatment plant, I believe that after the words inform Mr. Sullivan, I think it's important that we have Attorney Quaswell's comment. Town council stated it is almost certainly will not fall under the small guidelines, small in parentheses, guidelines, and thus will not be discussed.
All right, so say it to me one more time.
Town council stated it almost certainly will not fall under...
Okay, stated.
Yeah. Almost certainly will not fall under, in parentheses, small guidelines, and thus no need to discuss.
If you go back to the recorder for that, here?
Nope.
Does your last name have a G in it?
Small guidelines, so no reason to discuss.
D-O-N-O-G-H-U-E, and I'm constantly correcting that.
And then I'm going to sit...
Improperly spelled up at the top.
Go ahead.
The second from the bottom paragraph, Art Bowden of Harwich.
Same page?
Yes, same page. Art Bowden of Harwich, I think we should take out the descriptor. He didn't, he didn't address himself as a housing advocate. Uh, that's an editorial comment by the person writing the minutes, so I think that should be eliminated. It says, "And housing advocate."
Yeah.
I mean, nobody else is described as an opponent to the project or a project for the project. At the very least, if you're not going to, I think you strike those three words. If not, you at least have to correct the grammar and say "and" versus "and."
I think so, "and housing advocate," take that out.
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good catch.
And then for what's worth on page five.
Well, good, Ken.
Yeah, second paragraph, again, don't know if it matters, but Tom Birch is B-I-R-C-H.
Yep. Paula Miles is M-Y-L-E-S.
I'm thinking of picking that up.
Two below that.
Two below that.
Paula Miles is M-Y-L-E-S.
Yep, M-Y.
She's one of the ones that made the complaint.
And if you go right to the middle, it says Attorney Freeman replied that had been submitted, would be on that sentence. He explained the formula used to determine the amount of rent not to exceed thirty percent of individual income.
While you're correcting names, you may want to correct the spelling of my name, it's incorrect.
All right, okay, oh yeah, let's get that, one second. So not to exceed thirty percent?
Thirty percent of individual income, possessive individuals, apostrophe S.
Okay.
Those are all the changes that I found.
Where's your name spelled wrong?
Very top, members participating.
Oh, in the beginning, in the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have it right below, right?
Not even remotely close.
Well, it's kind of close.
Not to as I'm concerned.
Really have a G there.
It's D-O-N-O-G-H-U-E.
Okay.
Not like Phil.
No.
Not like Phil.
All right, I make a motion as amended, we approve. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well done. Okay, so next is minutes for October 15th.
There were some, again, typos, if you go to page four, just above halfway where it says, "Mr. Dixon asked Attorney Freeman..." You read that sentence, it doesn't read, I think the word would be needs to go right after the comma. "Mr. Dixon asked Attorney Freeman if the sightlines are acceptable, would the applicant be willing to make..." And this is the private road, so just moving the word would. Yeah.
And taking out the first comma.
I think in this context, sightlines is S-I-G-H-T, it's got to do with...
Where do you see sightlines, John?
Where it says S-I-T-E.
And that's not, that's, oh yeah, S-I...
That should be, they're talking about...
What you can see, S-I-G-H-T.
Yep. If we're correcting it, might as well. I gotta tell you, I always write down S-I-T-E.
S-I-T-E, do you?
Yeah, that's wrong, isn't it?
I don't know.
You want to make it right?
Sightlines are on the drawings.
Yep.
Sightlines are visual. You're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes?
Yeah, just on page five, Birch is spelled wrong again. One, two, three, four, fifth from the bottom, Tom Birch of Queen Anne Road.
Yep.
And that's all I found.
Okay, I have a motion to, um, to accept these as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is the calendar for 2026. Now I, my immediate kind of like knee-jerk reaction was, um, was eliminate the December 30th meeting.
I agree, that was my comment. We did it last year, and I think with delaying the November meeting to the December 9th.
So November and December are December 9th.
Yes.
So we're going to eliminate the December 30th meeting.
I just don't think it'll be effective that time of year. Too many people doing it.
Well, it's only that, just look at the fact, there's a, there's a high probability we won't have a full board.
Yeah, yeah.
For what it's worth, I know I'm gone on May 27th, I don't know if you're taking notes, but that's just one of our regular meetings. Everything else looks fine.
Oh, you know what, though, that was interesting.
Kevin, where in Wisconsin are you going?
Just south of Madison.
South of Madison.
Yeah, about 25 miles south. I lived my last 10 years in Madison, but New Glarus is actually the name of the town.
New Glarus?
Yeah.
I have a nephew who lives there, in Madison. Three little...
I will miss the March 25th meeting.
All right, it's just, oh, wait, the council, you're, you're going in March?
John's going in March, and I'm going in May.
But I'm going for like 20 days, so you've been changing it to a different date.
No, I don't think it's a change.
So Ken, you're out, maybe 27th meeting.
Yep.
All right, so with the change, can I have a motion that we accept this?
So moved.
Calendar?
I gotta get a copy, I don't have a calendar.
Oh, yes you will. Actually, Mike, I don't know, maybe it's in the, uh...
There you go.
No, but Chris's copy's down the street there.
Oh, yeah, Chris's.
Oh, okay.
Chris doesn't need one.
Down the street, huh?
And I have a second, please, I'm sorry.
I made the motion, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so next is minutes for October 15th.
There were some, again, typos, if you go to page four, just above halfway where it says, "Mr. Dixon asked Attorney Freeman..." You read that sentence, it doesn't read, I think the word would be needs to go right after the comma. "Mr. Dixon asked Attorney Freeman if the sightlines are acceptable, would the applicant be willing to make..." And this is the private road, so just moving the word would.
And taking out the first comma.
I think in this context, sightlines is S-I-G-H-T, it's got to do with...
Where do you see sightlines, John?
Where it says S-I-T-E.
And that's not, that's, oh yeah, S-I...
That should be, they're talking about...
What you can see, S-I-G-H-T.
Yep. If we're correcting it, might as well. I gotta tell you, I always write down S-I-T-E.
S-I-T-E, do you?
Yeah, that's wrong, isn't it?
I don't know.
You want to make it right?
Sightlines are on the drawings.
Yep.
Sightlines are visual. You're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes?
Yeah, just on page five, Birch is spelled wrong again. One, two, three, four, fifth from the bottom, Tom Birch of Queen Anne Road.
Yep.
And that's all I found.
Okay, I have a motion to, um, to accept these as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is the calendar for 2026. Now I, my immediate kind of like knee-jerk reaction was, um, was eliminate the December 30th meeting.
I agree, that was my comment. We did it last year, and I think with delaying the November meeting to the December 9th.
So November and December are December 9th.
Yes.
So we're going to eliminate the December 30th meeting.
I just don't think it'll be effective that time of year. Too many people doing it.
Well, it's only that, just look at the fact, there's a, there's a high probability we won't have a full board.
Yeah, yeah.
For what it's worth, I know I'm gone on May 27th, I don't know if you're taking notes, but that's just one of our regular meetings. Everything else looks fine.
Oh, you know what, though, that was interesting.
Kevin, where in Wisconsin are you going?
Just south of Madison.
South of Madison.
Yeah, about 25 miles south. I lived my last 10 years in Madison, but New Glarus is actually the name of the town.
New Glarus?
Yeah.
I have a nephew who lives there, in Madison. Three little...
I will miss the March 25th meeting.
All right, it's just, oh, wait, the council, you're, you're going in March?
John's going in March, and I'm going in May.
But I'm going for like 20 days, so you've been changing it to a different date.
No, I don't think it'll change.
So Ken, you're out, maybe 27th meeting.
Yep.
All right, so with the change, can I have a motion that we accept this?
So moved.
Calendar?
I gotta get a copy, I don't have a calendar.
Oh, yes you will. Actually, Mike, I don't know, maybe it's in the, uh...
There you go.
No, but Chris's copy's down the street there.
Oh, yeah, Chris's.
Oh, okay.
Chris doesn't need one.
Down the street, huh?
And I have a second, please, I'm sorry.
I made the motion, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, um, just when you thought you were going to be done, um... I sent everyone this, I had an issue regarding, regarding the new, um... Alan, pass one down to Marilyn. All right, so, um, new business, I'm just making addition because this came up after the agenda was posted, so I can adjust the, I can adjust the agenda tonight, include this. All right, so we've all been contacted regarding the fact the town has a new, uh, selectment approved, new regu, new regulations in which everyone serving on a committee or board is going to be assigned an email address, um, which I think for communication-wise, it's a great idea, you know, as far as, you know, between the town and everyone communicating as far as the boards and the departments. However...
Be very candid with you, I'll never use it.
The, the, you know, I'm supposed to, as chair, begins like, you know, when it's all in place, start using those email addresses, so that way everything is captured by the town as far as all communication. Fully support that. However, they plan on publishing that on the website, so everyone's email address is on the website. We're a regulatory body, and, um, and I don't know if anyone read this before, I think before coming tonight, and please, if you hadn't, take a moment here to read it, but my major concern is that information being, um, sent to, you know, correspondence to individual board members, and that information is not being disseminated to all the board members. And I prefer the fact that the ZBA have a central email address, so we, you know, zba@harwich.gov or whatever. And then we have a secretary, we're not, someone can send something to me individually, but it goes to that address. So now goes the secretary, she's got it, and then when information's being passed on to one board member, unless it's a personal nature or whatever, which I doubt it would be, um, then it would be disseminated as, as required for information to the rest of the board. I also have a major concern that, um, board members, uh, will be, residents can be contacting a board member regarding a subject, instead of that information, you know, being, uh, presented at a hearing. I think we, I think information, you know, being exchanged between a board member and other parties, the applicant, whomever, um, and directly being, you know, it's, uh, being contacted, I think that it, it could easily put us into open meeting violations, particularly if you feel compelled to respond to that app, that, that resident, which outside of a case being called, a hearing, we can't do. We can't discuss cases outside of a hearing typically, you know? So, you know, I mean, I'm not going to read this whole thing, I don't know if you ever had a chance to read it, but basically, um, I recommend the fact that they, uh, including it, centralized email communication strengthens the transparency and fairness of the legal and offensive responsibility of appeals board decisions while protecting the volunteer board members from inappropriate contact. Amending the recent approved, approved email policy to restrict public contact will align the town's practices with best governance standards for municipal regulatory boards. Basically, you know, other boards aren't dealing with the issues and cases. When we have a case that's being, particularly the one that's, you know, like on 40B, when we close down that case and we adjourn it, and we close, and we close a public hearing, that's it, we're done getting information. And it won't be, so still having people being able to email us after a hearing's been closed is outside of the guidelines of, of open meeting laws. All right? And anyways, I have a problem with this, I have a problem with all being targeted, you know, not that I'm really concerned about that, but other board members, and I'm particularly concerned of the, of the feeling, the fact that I'd rather have Rachel, with what they've done, when people send in, send in comments, they always respond back. Received your comments, it will be forwarded to the board members. That's the deal.
I had similar concerns, I'd seen your memo already, but I was picking up my credentials today, and I spoke with Emily about it as well, and I think, you know, particularly with the 40Bs, I said, you know, I can envision some of these more passionate citizens sending us stuff daily. Um, and what she talked about, and I think they're, they're looking at in the town, is to, um, have us set up a standard reply to all emails that basically say, you know, that if this is regarding a matter that's currently pending before the board at the proper channel, you know, to address it is through this way, you will not receive an reply to this email. But she felt that the entire board should set up the same response. And then in addition, I echoed your comment, and I said, I, I think we need a centralized mailbox that we can send things to, but I think, because my concern is, I said, well, you know, which I, I never do reply to all, but if, if someone sends it to all the board members, and then one of us replies to all, then you got an open meeting violation, right?
Absolutely.
We're sharing information. So to, to set up just basically a block that says, we're not...
I would go even further with that. I don't see any need, if we're not going to, I like your idea for the, for the protection, but if we're going to do that, there's no need to even put our email addresses on the website.
Yeah, well, they're going to do that.
Because...
Unless, unless they get a lot of pushback, I mean, the plan is they're all going to be published on the website.
I'm going to, trust me, I'm, I'm, I'm...
Please push back. I don't want my email address on the website.
I come from a background where information is limited to those whom have a need to know. As far as I'm concerned, there's very few people that need to know. And I will not take an email. It, that's it, I'm done. Your emails are different, obviously.
I understand.
But, but that out there is like throwing that up against the wall, because there's no protection whatsoever on that.
You know, the town clerk has townclerk.harwich, or at harwichmasko.
But there's also an Emily Mitchell at Harwich.
That's public?
Yeah. But she's not a regulatory board.
Yeah.
She's not hearing cases.
But my point is, you can, they can make a departmental email, they can make a ZBA email address. And we should.
Yeah, I, I, but I mean, I shared my, I'm like, I'm not real comfortable with, if this gets public, the inbox is going to be filled with crap, and I'm not even going to look at it. I said, that's basically, I said, I'm not going to, you know, get 15 emails from one concerned citizen every day.
Unfortunately, what's going to happen here is if you get an email from me...
Yeah, that's the problem.
Were you going to see it amongst all the, all the garbage?
Yeah.
Well, not that, not that I context when people have got me, that's, I'm not trying to say that, but...
Again, it's, it's the, the exceptions, unfortunately, you know, make, make normal business difficult sometimes, you know, and I can just foresee getting, you know, getting these petitions for a 40B via email, getting other stuff via email, you're like, wait a minute, this is not the appropriate channel for this stuff to be...
I've had my email address somehow get out there, and I've been, I've had direct contacts, which I, which I turn on and I report.
Yeah, but she felt that at least an outlook, having that set up, that said, all right, every email's going to get this response that says, if this is regarding...
But eliminate, you're...
It's automatic.
No, they, automatically, you would set it up in your setup, like an auto...
And there's no point in even having a...
But then why have it?
Which...
Why can't we just go to the Board of Appeals or zba@harwich.com?
The only thing that gets public.
And, and, that's it, and that all, that goes in there, and if they want to send something to you, it goes to that, and they say, you know, what email, you know, Dear John.
I'm, we're in agreement.
Well, I want to make a motion, the fact that, first of all, I make two motions here. I, I, um, I would, I would like to make a motion that my, my memo here be able to be sent to the Board of Selectment as being a memo agreed upon, you know, by the Board of Appeals, of membership. So I'd like to make a motion, and, and, you know, that the board accepts this memorandum that's coming from the board, and I'm able to reforward this to the full select board as a motion from the board. All right, so that's my...
Can we have some discussion?
Yeah, sure, this is, you know...
So let me just clarify what you're saying here. So I, I understand the, your, number one. Uh, number two, um, number three is not necessary if they don't publish our, our email addresses. And I think we should make a fight, we do not want our town email addresses published.
That's my next motion. That's my next motion.
The only problem I see with them, I agree with you about not publishing them, but once everybody learns the format, they're going to know that it's john dot august at Harwich. I mean, you can figure it out pretty quick, right, what the naming convention is for the emails, so, you know...
We're opening our door, I think the whole town's opening its door to a lot of very odd people that are going to take advantage of this.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there are a lot of folks in town that, that want to have their opinions, and they have valid opinions, and they have a valid right to, to, to express that opinion to any, any committee or board, and particularly on, you know, we're a regulatory board, you know, we do a lot of important things.
Does he, does he, if that be the case, have him take a seat?
You know, but the thing, yeah, but the bottom line is, is that, um...
It's fraught with danger.
We're setting ourselves up.
Yeah.
We're setting ourselves up for open meeting violations. So... We're setting ourselves up for open meeting violations. So, um.
I wouldn't make any changes to your, to your memo. They can look at or not look at whatever they want to, but this is just step one, because your next motion is gonna be to not publish.
The board, the board here has voted that we, we, we refuse to have our email addresses posted on the public site.
I'm not sure you can refuse. You can, you could resign if it, because that's if the selectmen say this is your policy, you can't refuse. But let's talk about this memo. Let's stay on this for now.
Right.
Motion is second. Any more discussion?
Well, we're gonna get, I mean. First of all, I have to say the town website.
We need a full board discussion of this.
No, we are, well, this is, this is the full board here tonight.
It's a forum.
It's a full forum. So it's, I'm not, um, okay, this, this statement here.
Which one?
Number three isn't actually a statement that's going out on an email that comes in. It's a statement on the website itself. All right, so, so what, well, you saved me, and I, I think it's a good pickup, but this is, we're not gonna put this on an automatic reply on an email. This is just going on the website. Because I had people who've gotten hold of me from my personal email address. And, um, so that, I like to keep that state. All right, but it's good, but this isn't, this isn't the automatic statement which John discussed with, with the town clerk today. This is just, goes on the website, all right?
I got it.
All right, um, so.
All this is, is a recommendation to the selectmen in expressing our opinion.
Right, that's, that's this part. Right, right, so. I made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Actually, I think, I don't know, I thought Marilyn made the motion. I seconded it.
Okay, all right, Marilyn and, and Ken. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so what basically we're doing here is, it's gonna be to the, the Board of Selectmen and, um. Huh?
You're gonna remove the P S at the bottom?
Yeah, that's gotta go. Okay. All right, so I guess we moved, okay.
Yeah, don't forget to move it.
Okay. Now, um, you're right, using the word refuse is probably not appropriate.
Strongly object.
Board, Board of Appeals strongly objects.
That's fair.
To individual.
Public release of individual email addresses.
A release of individual. The Board of Appeals as a regulatory authority strongly objects to the release of individual email addresses. I'd like to make that, I also felt aboard that, and might have a.
I think there needs to be a little more to it than just one sentence. I think it's one thing to say we object. I think we should tell them why we object. I mean, I realize they're gonna have this, but in that, if you're gonna send them, if we're making a second motion, you're gonna.
Okay, you know.
We're gonna include that statement as part of this. That's what I was assuming.
Okay. Well, what I could do is, um.
For the following reasons, right?
Yeah, you could maybe incorporate this.
I can incorporate that into the letter.
Yeah.
So I'm incorporating the letter the fact that the Board, the Board of Appeals as a regulatory authority strongly objects to release individual email addresses.
And that should replace this memo recommends an individual.
Yeah.
A much stronger statement.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I'll revise that, I'll revise that accordingly.
And it makes sense, but they can include, but all correspondence to the Board of Appeals should be routed through a single town manager. I mean, that's, that last part is good. But the first part, I think we need to.
Yeah, I'll fix that.
Which means we probably need to make a new motion.
All right, like, so with those changes, I'd like to, Ken, why don't you make a motion?
I gotta think what we gotta do. We probably have to, um.
We're gonna adjust the first paragraph to include that the Board of Appeals as a regulatory authority strongly objects to the release of individual email addresses. A release and publication, a recent publication of individual email addresses.
For the following reasons noted below, and several paragraphs explain why it's a bad idea.
Yep.
So was that your motion?
Not yet. Because I think we have to undo the motion we just did. We've already made a motion to send a different email.
Well, can we move to amend the previous motion?
Yes, we can move to amend the previous motion.
No, because you've already voted on it.
All right, so we're.
You'd have, you'd have to vote to eliminate the previous motion.
Rescind and replace with.
There you go, rescind and replace, okay. I'd like to make a motion
Right.
that we rescind and replace the previously voted upon memo with the attached memo as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ken, John, Father. Yeah, I'll send it out to you. I'll send it to you. Yeah, I, I just think this is a.
Well, I think we need to go on record in the beginning for so many reasons. By the way, the public doesn't violate the open meeting law. The way we respond, we put ourselves at risk violating, because the public's not violating anything. We run the risk of probability, almost certainty, of certainty of making a mistake.
At some point, yeah.
Okay, um.
And never hit reply at all.
Well, I had mentioned her, but it would, it would require an investment, some programming. In my previous company, that I was part owner of, we created an email, a separate email template within Outlook that did not have a reply at all, but.
You'll get it.
It's just a sleeve I would have.
Because of the ridiculous things that would just go back and forth and waste energy and time. We said, you know what, we've had it. But it takes some time, I think, to do it.
Is there any old business?
The only old business that I would note, Brian, is actually on this meeting's minutes, or, um, agenda. It doesn't note the December first meeting that we agreed.
Yes, right.
Let us think for future poster.
And that's a daytime meeting.
And it's a daytime meeting, it needs to be highlighted.
I don't know if you'd, um, it's, um. I think I need to get it scheduled for nine o'clock.
We do, nine to three.
Nine to three, okay, so.
It's the time block. Let's hope it doesn't take that long.
Yeah, no. All right, so the, um, I already know the fact, the, the next zoning board appeals meeting, which is subject to change, but looks pretty permanent, is, I mean, it's set, pretty much set in stone, will be on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. And this is in regards to the Pine Oaks Four Comprehensive Permit Case. And I would like to just make sure that everyone's aware of the fact that there's a high probability that the, at that meeting, that hearing will be the final public hearing for the Pine Oaks Four, um, C P A, you know, application. And after that time, the, um, once we adjourn the public hearing, there may be a portion at the end of that hearing where after we adjourn it, the board may then be going into, begin deliberations at the seventeenth meeting, but maybe not.
And that may be held in this room?
No, on the, well, that's, on the seventeenth, we may, after we close a public hearing, then we may begin the segment of the board itself doing deliberations at that night. Okay, just discussion of.
We're gonna, you're talking about two oh four.
That's two oh four.
It's all in Sisson Road yesterday.
Right, now. Then, our next meeting, after the seventeenth of November, it's gonna be December first at the Town Hall Griffin Room in this room. And that's gonna be a daytime meeting that would commence, uh, approximately nine o'clock that day on December first. And will be beginning approximately nine o'clock and will adjourn, um, before or by three P M. That meeting will be open to the public. However, there will be no, um, testimony, information from the public nor the applicant. It's strictly discussion and review of the, you know, deliberations, you know, by the Board of Appeals. Okay, with that, it is now nine eleven. And I'd like to make a motion that we close the hearing.
Don't move.
Aye.
Motion. All those in favor?
Aye.